What?
Oh, you're not.
Oh, you're surprised.
See the books?
What is it like nine sixty?
No!
He's over him.
I'll send it to him.
Should be Oklahoma.
I said Oklahoma.
Here, I'm good. I said Oklahoma.
That's right.
Yeah, same one. I think it was a different.
Try sign your other.
What's the difference between what's a difference between?
What's he going to do?
For what?
Yeah.
Like the truck?
Yes, yeah.
It takes a little while.
Three days.
Yeah, it took a while.
This is a barber school.
I need to be cranky.
When?
What do you say?
Oh, I would be cranky if I did.
I just love to throw.
I thought about that after, I was like, oh, he has stuff in his hands.
Yeah, that's so. I just.
And like you never have.
That's right.
Oh. Yeah, sorry. You're giving us a softball. No, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I'm scared just by the hand. And then I was like, oh, he's got a glove. No, he's just like, what's wrong?
I think there was a couple of coffee.
Hey, what's up?
So far, I don't like it.
I thought you were gonna give him the. I was like, oh, she's.
Okay. I'll send it to you. I'll send it to you.
Put it care of Mary.
I could have you represent that.
Did you try?
I wanted to finally. I left at twelve thirty.
Mine is well made. Their season continued.
But we found that though by eleven thirty, eleven thirty five is scheduled and that's when Greg came on.
Yeah, so it's not. Right, it's not like you said.
Sure wasn't one day.
Have you seen his, uh, the dog?
Well, I love short ones because he still had the other two representatives. I would represent. It's just being then.
Good evening, welcome to, uh, tonight's meeting. Today, January the second, two thousand and nineteen, time is now six P M. The regular meeting of city council, the city of Trinidad will now be called order. Would you please rise for the flag's allegiance, pardon for his lead us, please?
Yes.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming and thank everyone for two thousand and eighteen. Of course, thanking, hopefully that two thousand and nineteen will be a good year for the city of Trinidad and we'll work hard, I believe, for the city to, uh, have a good year and to bring the city up closer to where we need to be in the future. I know it's gonna take a long time, but, uh, that is my hope and I'm sure everyone's hope on this, on this council. Uh, the last year is behind us and I think we move forward in a positive manner in any way that we can and, uh, to make, uh, to be progressive. So, uh, thank you for that. Call call, please.
Bernato?
Here.
Goodall?
Here.
Riego? Here. Lopez?
Here.
Mete?
Here.
Miles?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda, any changes? Motion.
Sub moved.
Second. Call a vote?
Bernato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mete?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, three A, anti lobbying resolution. Who has the information on that? Is that you Greg or?
Yeah, I typed this up based on some information that I found. This is a typical requirement when we, if we ever get into federal grants like C D E Gs, those kind of things. And, uh, if you're required to take a stand that you won't lobby Congress or administrative agency people in order to better your position for a grant or use especially grant monies to do that with.
Now, is that for personal gain or is that for the city's?
This is for the city's gain.
So, I can't contact our senators or congresspeople and say, hey, we're really trying to push this, can you help us out?
No.
I don't like that.
Yeah, I think that's why this is gonna be right in the same law.
I mean, that's my initial thought when I read this and I was like, well, why can't I reach out to one of our, you know, uh, leaders out there and say, we need help here for our community? What's my, you know, avenue to pursue then? Do I have to hire somebody else to do it for us? Hire a lobbyist to do something when it's my agenda or our agenda? You know what I mean? I don't know, this is weird.
It's a, it's a standard requirement that's in, there's a.
The Bird Act or something?
There are ten things that are on that list and this is one of them. And so when New York was going bankrupt and the mayor of New York was lobbying Congress to get a bailout, that was, maybe that was before the Bird Act could be.
Well, that, that doesn't seem right because it came out in nineteen ninety or something.
Well, I'm talking late seventies.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have to stipulate that you're not representing the city of Trinidad, you're a registered citizen? Yourself is a private citizen?
That's hard to do when you're like an official. You're, you kind of can't draw that line very easy.
You can get office hours with their staff. I did it all the time when I lived, lived within the Amtrak corridor.
You can do what?
Get office hours with their staff. And say, look, I don't like this legislation. It affects, uh, a group that, you know, I contribute a lot of money to. And here's the problem, it says right here, uh, influencing or attempting to influence, influence an officer or employee of any agency.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying, but that wasn't true.
Okay, it wasn't true at that time.
I'm wondering if we ever bet, what's the date of this?
Nineteen eighty-nine?
That's, yeah.
No, this is after eighty-nine.
Nineteen ninety?
Um, this is pretty typical stuff.
We used to get people from all over the country to lobby on specific issues.
Maybe that's why this is in there.
Okay, so, so my question is this, um, you know, I, I've never seen this presented before. This council or previous councils, when I used to come to meetings, um, and I tried to attend quite a few of those. Why is this now all of a sudden just being presented to us when it wasn't last year?
I don't know.
Well, you were here last year this time, so I'm asking you.
I've been asking about this, but we, we may not have been benefiting from a lot of direct federal things lately. But when you, when you sign the document, at the back of it, there's a whole list of things that you are to abide by.
Could I please ask, and I don't mean to interrupt Greg, but it says, whereas no appropriated funds may be expended by the recipient of a federal contract grant or a cooperative agreement to pay any person for influence or attempting to influence an officer or employee of any agency or member of Congress. It sounds to me almost like you can't use the money that you're receiving to pay a lobbyist to perpetuate the source of funds that you're getting.
Correct.
But if you're a council person and you've got it, you've received a grant, you might be able to say, I, that grant would be great, just not have any money from the grant paying you for your efforts.
That's how I'm reading it, that's what I think.
That's so sad for you.
That defeats the whole purpose of a democracy when you have this elected officials where you can't go and talk to them because we're all citizens, whether we're elected or not, in a lower capacity or, I mean, that seems counterintuitive to the whole process. I can understand what you, like how they don't want previous, uh, congress members to become lobbyists.
Right.
I see how that kind of has come to be because they know the ins and outs and they have interconnections through their network. But, um, this, I don't know, I kinda wanna sit on this honestly and think about it.
You're not being asked to approve this. This is just for presentation.
It is, it is what it is.
Yeah.
And I guess the best thing to do is go back to our council or if you're, he's not sure, he can ask somebody else to clarification or whatever.
Be happy to.
So let's do that.
Yeah, that's what I would ask.
Let's do that.
At this point, it's just a draft.
Yeah.
So I'm not asking you to approve it.
Is this kind of a boilerplate from other communities or?
More or less, yeah.
It is a boilerplate.
Yeah, it's kind of rigid.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? Any other thoughts?
I think we're all kind of, when we read that, I'm sure every one of us thought the same thing.
What?
Anyway.
Item four, petitions or communications are all written, do we have anything?
Workup.
We're good? Okay. Item five, consent agenda. Approval of regular meeting minutes of December the eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen and special meeting minutes of December the twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Item B, designation of public places for posting of notices of meetings, which is the city hall and Carnegie Public Library. And item C, approval of the bills. And item D, approval of payroll, December the twenty-nine, December twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen through January eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Motion, please.
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
The only one I was gonna ask, uh, is that, I was noticing that when we approved the bonuses of one forty-seven and then, then now it's one sixty-one. The bonuses for the employees, total dollar amount, the total dollar amount, it was one forty-seven and now it's listed at one sixty-one, seven seventy, two fifty? Is that, because that, including the employer match that came out of that of the F I C A?
Um, that can be, we, because there, that's the, the amount you approved is the pay.
Right.
So there's all sorts of costs.
So that's what I was wondering if it was the F I C A match.
Yeah, we have to pay the additional seven points.
Right, I have to get F I C A match. That might, so at that, that might be good to find out. Okay, call a vote, please. Not, not our own with discussion. I've got many requests for us to not just post pieces of paper on windows, but for us to post the agenda on the city's website and it's not there. And can we do that?
Sure.
Okay, do we need to amend?
Don't refer to that as supposed to.
No, I checked this afternoon and it's not there.
I don't know if they list the meetings or they don't give the agenda. Um, if you wanna add that to it, you could, I don't know if the website counts as an official posting, so I think you still need to.
In addition to these, in addition to this.
Um, another thought is, and I don't know if it's in the cards for the finances, but in the local newspaper, that's something that can be done. If it's done in the legal portion of the paper, because they're usually cheaper in the legal section versus regular advertisements.
The bigger issue with that is timing.
Right.
By the time we publish it, it immediately be yours.
And the cost too, so for a lot of the.
But the thing is, if we get it in by Friday, when we get the agenda, they should be able to publish it by Tuesday morning.
But our only requirement is to post it in, our only requirement is to post it in two places anyway, so. In addition, I think the website is probably the best thing to do. Okay? Anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay. Call a vote on that, please.
Bernato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mete?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, consideration of ordinance repealing and reenacting, that's item six, which is a public hearing. Hearing is not open, six eight, consideration of ordinance repealing and reenact, reenacting sections contained in alcoholic beverages chapter of the Trinidad municipal code to conform to Colorado state statutes and amend, uh, sections to clearly identify local requirements. Uh, Audra is not here, anybody have any additions?
There's, there's numerous changes that got made in the last legislative session and that's what this ordinance reflects, is those changes. Couple of, I mentioned it earlier, that, that are kinda weird is it establishes requirements that, I think further requirements of how far an older liquor license has to be from a school, but then it allows eighteen-year-olds to work in any type of liquor establishment. So you can walk across the street and work in one, but your school can't be near one, which is kind of.
But, but is that for, uh, K through twelve school or does it also include college campuses?
I don't imagine a college.
Because you're probably not gonna have too many eighteen-year-olds in high school, so maybe a few, but not as many.
More than you think, because as the, um, the schools have switched up the age limit, most people are now restarting school at like almost six. So it puts almost their entire senior year at age eighteen now.
Most people graduating at nineteen now.
And, uh, okay, and so that, that just is a curious thing that's in the new state law. That doesn't really change it. But one of the things that, um, we didn't put in here is Trinidad has had a longstanding policy that eighteen-year-olds cannot work in a bar. And so we left it that way. If you wanted to say, okay, I think state laws, it's okay.
I think that liquor law used to allow that.
Let's get some, let's get some, I just know information from any of the other council people. Do you have any information, any questions?
No, I, I suspect that it probably would be in our best interest to be consistent to stay allowed.
Karen?
Same here.
Okay.
Well, I, you just skipped me.
Well, you, well, you, I'll come back around here. Agree?
Yes.
I agree.
Go ahead.
Well, the state liquor law used to permit someone eighteen years of age to serve alcohol as long as someone twenty-one years of age was in the presence there on site, so if that's something that we're considering, where the tavern is the exception there, which allows food sales as well, correct?
I think it's just a, uh, a tavern, I don't think it's a restaurant. It's in our code right now.
Okay, because I just wanna make sure that a server can be able to serve a drink to someone as long as someone's still twenty-one because they're holding a liquor license.
Hmm, but this, the, the, or, or, uh, Audra said this has been in code for a long time. So I don't know when Trinidad adopted it, but it is more stringent than the state.
It, but we can't be a defiance of state law. We can, we can modify it later if, if it's council's desire to have servers who are eighteen to twenty-one, if our local ordinance doesn't permit that. But so you know, and to the mayor's point, that is, this is an effort to get our ordinances in compliance with the state law and the state law changes. And we've already done, we took the portion of the ordinances that refers to three-two beer and three-two beer licenses. I don't need to speak not in response to your point, Council Lopez, but this is just trying to get us in, in compliance with state law. And I will tell all of you, I don't know how many of you had a chance to look at the video presentation that the Department of Revenue did, what a, with all due respect, nonsensical bunch of, well, I mean, it's hard to follow. That's what I wanna say. Before I get horribly disparaging, thank you. And also even, you know, Audra has the, uh, the PowerPoint attached to this and even that is really hard to follow. But we are getting, you know, the, the city of Trinidad in lawful compliance with the state law changes, most, most fundamentally and, and everything else, questions you may have, we're happy to, to answer or maybe get back to you on. If you have questions about, you know, when, in what kind of license can an eighteen-year-old serve alcohol? If that makes sense. But some of the licenses now, I think a tavern license actually has a food requirement and I don't believe it did before, I don't wanna mischaracterize. The whole thing of a tavern license was you could drink and you didn't have to, you know, if you're the owner, you didn't have to serve food. You do have to have some food available, but I don't need to die correct, so.
One other thing, just to let you know that, uh, I think staff has already sent out all of the new, uh, information to all of the license holders in the community. Because I was downstairs here last week and they have it spread all over the place, so they sent it out to all of the current license holders.
May I add something?
Sure.
Just, I thought this was kind of interesting because Christmas Day, there were no, there was no liquor served either carry out or in a restaurant with the marijuana places were open.
I noticed that too.
I thought that was kinda.
Well, you're just gonna have to, no, just kidding.
Might I just answer your question? I wish they would leave me home alone with my dog on Christmas Day. Do not let me go in or have an employee go in on Christmas Day. Wish the head gave us Thanksgiving, you know, it's.
I know.
It's something I like.
Yeah.
I don't envy the marijuana.
No, I didn't either, I thought it was interesting.
Okay, if that's it, uh, anyone in the audience to speak for or against the ordinance repealing? Not, hearing closed. Item six eight one, could we have a second reading, please?
An acknowledgement, repealing and reenacting sections contained in the alcohol beverage chapter of the Trinidad municipal code to conform to Colorado state statutes and amend sections to clearly identify local requirements.
Okay, have motion, please?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? None, call a vote?
Bernato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mete?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item, we have no of seven, we have no unfinished business. Item eight, which is miscellaneous business. Eight eight, resolution adopting the policy for the management of the city's fleet. Got a motion?
Sub moved.
Yeah, second?
Second, okay.
Discussion, I think. What are the information efforts?
Good evening. Uh, we have GPS units, we've gotten them through Sprint, um, they'll be installed in the O B E ports. This particular policy is so that, you know, if we have, it basically covers driver behavior, idle time, um, things that, actually, the idle time's a big deal. If you have a lot of idle time, it'd be a big savings and we can actually address some of that. Um, and it does come up and alert us, each one of us, uh, will get something in our department depending on who it is or, uh, what it is. So for maintenance, it'll be Tom. Um, if the vehicle actually throws a code, an engine code, that email will go to his group at the garage. So we'll know right away when we have issues. One of the things that's really important, though, I think, to acknowledge with this policy and the units that are gonna be installed is that once we're aware, um, let's say we have an issue with driver behavior, seat ducts, things like that, we really do have to address those things. Um, we can't leave that, it becomes a greater liability for the city at that point in time. So, uh, I think the policy's important, I don't know if you agree with everything that's in here, it seems like it's a pretty standard policy, but I'm happy to answer any questions too.
Look, we did.
No.
Does this include police vehicles?
Yes.
It does, um, knowing that police vehicles are not always gonna have the same driver behavior, there are gonna be some allowances and that, yes. Police vehicles will make it.
For the disciplinary action deemed necessary shall be documented and shall process, be processed in the same manner as other disciplinary action taken against employees of the city, do we have that listed in the employee handbook that all employees receive?
That's a great question, I'm not sure. What, what was your question?
So, in the responsibility for city-owned vehicles, there is a section there at the end that states that all disciplinary action deemed necessary shall be documented and shall, I think it says be processed in the same manner as other disciplinary action taken against employees of the city.
It, it would be in both the, um, it is addressed in the policy manual and also in the union contracts for disciplinary.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, no comments?
Nothing.
None? Okay. Question I had is, uh, do we at this point in time see unnecessary use of city vehicles? Are we seeing any of that or?
Um, we did get reports on them already, we only have them in four vehicles right now. Um, idle time's a big one, it seems like. We're not really seeing a whole lot, there are a few engine codes that we've actually heard of seeing. So those will go straight to, um, the, the city garage. Now, the interesting thing is, we did get equipment for city garage to manage their department a little bit better, Snap-on tools, it was actually an expensive device. What we're hoping to do is maybe manage that fleet a little bit better, address problems before they become bigger problems, um, things like that, so. But not, not at this time, uh, but once again, we only have it in four vehicles.
And each director from each department has the responsibility to be monitoring, correct?
That's correct.
And my, my concern on anything like this is that initially they begin to use it and then after a while they say, oh, you know, they're, they're through a bit of repetition, they say, okay, and they just kinda let it lapse. So that's kinda my concern is that, you know, what point does it become just mute to them and they just sign off on it and set it to the end of the new part again? So I'm not sure more than one, uh, person sees it, as things happen, they can hold that other person responsible and say, why didn't you pick this up? Uh, I'm not sure if that's something that you guys can do.
We can, um, we can actually set several email addresses to get a certain alert. So it might be Tom and his team, I get all of them, um, just because I, I manage the account. But, uh, or it might be Mike, um, where he might see, you know, this, this is high idle time, but his management staff also might see the same thing. So that it, it can be addressed at different levels. And maybe it's something that, you know, we just continue to circle back to, um, as department heads and continue to have conversations and, and make sure that we're addressing that, but I think that's a real concern, it's like the monotony of the situation.
Yeah, it is. One thing that you mentioned, it'll monitor people that don't need to put on their seatbelts?
It will in some vehicles, the Fords, so some of the Ford trucks, but not all of them. The, the problem then is if you snap the seatbelt behind them, it's going to slow down.
Well, that's true.
Well, we already have a rule that seatbelts would be worn, will be worn. So it becomes an enforcement issue, we do have complaints about city employees who don't wear them.
Yes, you're there.
Yes, I mean, go ahead.
You're talking about seatbelt usage and stuff like that. I thought there was a, a policy that was adopted that, that cell phone, you see the driving city vehicles and stuff like that. And another question I have today, I see two police cars being told by a city truck bringing them into the city garage. And my, and my other question to that would be, are we up to standards to service these police cars or whatever? I'm, I'm talking about equipment now. I mean, you can't just go over there and change a, a set of points and a set of, uh, condenser, you gotta have the right equipment to know what's going on. So my question is, do we have, I think there is something against cell phone usage. You know, I, a lot of times I see them being involved with the cell phone and also what kind of equipment do we have down there now that could solicit some expense instead of bringing it back to the dealer?
So great questions, I'm not sure about the cell phone policy, but I can definitely find that out.
I think Don actually go on that, don't you?
She said yes.
No, we have a cell phone policy usage in the policy manual, yes.
Because if somebody gets in an accident and they're on the seat, the cell phone, it gets down liable.
I don't think if this resolution just, uh, talks about the use of the vehicle itself, so.
Absolutely. And to answer your, the second part of your question, we have, um, equipment now for city garage. Um, and it is diagnostic equipment, it does have quite a few adapters in it, um, because there's a range of vehicles here, some of them older, some of them newer. Um, that particular piece of equipment was a pricey piece of equipment, but it will connect to the internet and it will tell them, these are the parts you need. They don't have to take them somewhere else to actually diagnose codes.
That brings back the money to us because of savings, we have better equipment.
Yeah, and the time.
I have a lot of that equipment, so.
Yeah, better fleet management for sure.
The last question I had is, uh, is there a mileage limitation on this? For instance, I know that some of the, uh, employees have to go over as far as up as the treatment plant. Will it record that far away?
Yes, it will. Um, and we have what's called geo fences, so each department will have a fence. Water departments goes all the way up, highway twelve. What happens is when they break the, the geo fence, it alerts us, right? So maybe they go outside of it, maybe they're traveling to Denver, we'll get an alert on, on that break in the geo fence. What happens with Sprint, because their coverage isn't complete, especially up highway twelve, that's true of most of the cell service providers here, it continues to record until it comes back into range and then it uploads its data. So we will get accurate data, but that's a good question.
Okay. And the other questions?
Is Greg's car given?
Yes, it is, it already has one.
In one of the test cars.
It's all way.
No further questions, call a vote, please? Somebody made a motion on that.
I think Rusty.
Rusty? I'll send out. We did that first.
Bernato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mete?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Okay. Item nine, council reports, uh.
I don't have nothing at this time.
Rusty?
Um, nothing.
Neither. No, it was kinda quiet, lots of work and lots of food, nothing to report.
Um, next week, we will be having interviews for the C M L executive director position amongst the three candidates that we have and, um, that's, that's really about it, that's next Friday. Um, and then we have legislation days on the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. I don't think I'll be able to attend because I'll be traveling the weekend before, so I know you sent out the email, Greg, just give me a heads up on that. But if anyone else can go, I highly recommend it because it's a great experience.
I have nothing.
Nothing? Hey, I'm crying on the Wild Frontier here tonight.
We still got executives, so.
I do have, I do have a couple of things, uh, the day after the roundtable, which I think was, it was really well attended, I think we had, I counted around, it may be close to ninety people, which was really, really good attendance, I thought it was a good roundtable, I'm not sure what everybody else thinks, but I think it was pretty well, uh, you know, the speakers, the presenters over there were those great, and so, thank you guys for attending. After the meeting, uh, met with Kimmy Lewis, and the purpose was not to change her mind, because we know where she sits with, with her thought, but to try to maybe make her a little more comfortable with the decision as to why we're just, I'm just informed to let her know that we're moving forward with this project, uh, regardless. And, uh, just to let her know that it was, it was important to us on an economic, from an economical standpoint, and, and of course she had several questions and concerns, and, uh, during the process, uh, she said she might have some recommendations, so I asked her if she had any recommendations that we need to look at, moving forward, for us to be aware of, please send it to us, or to Greg, or me, or somebody, in an email, so that we can at least have those, and so we may get some information in from that.
What kind of recommendations?
Well, anything that she has, 'cause she's so anti-project, that, and she's, uh, has a lot of knowledge from conservation easements and all that stuff, so. I asked her if she had anything that we need to be aware of to please discuss, so, thought that was that. And in the end, the only thing I asked her, I said, I know that you're not in favor of this project, but I asked if you're just simply not opposed it. And her answer was, I'll think about it. So, we'll see. With that, uh, just to let you know, from the Amtrak, uh, US DOT, they received a nine-point-one-six Chrissy grant, and what that does is, uh, it allow, it's nine-point-one-six million dollars for, um, positive train control from Dot City, Kansas to Los Angeles, Colorado, which is about hundred-seventy-nine miles. Uh, the issue is, is Amtrak is still withholding the original, uh, Chrissy grant that was granted to New Mexico last year. They're also withholding the sixteen-million-dollar TAGR grant that we're supposed to get. And that, that's for track and signal costs in New Mexico. The argument there is that a comprehensive plan, they don't agree with it. And, uh, the commission is, is saying that it does need it, so there's some back and forth there, and I'm not sure what's gonna happen. Uh, you know, the partners say that the plan submitted is, is suitable, so that's, uh, that remains to be seen as to how that all is handled. What it's doing, though, is delaying scheduling to the track work, which was anticipated on TAGR grant nine. Uh, and of course, they're also, with the whole thing, that fifty million dollars that Congress awarded, it's holding that up as well. So if you add up the dollars, it's in excess of, you know, seventy, seventy to eighty thousand dollars, it's eighty million dollars. So it's a, I'm not sure what's gonna happen, but there's a meeting coming up, uh, shortly, we'll maybe get a little more information on that. And just for everyone's information, the new CDOT director, uh, is under Governor-elect Polis, is Shoshana Lou. So she's the new, or she's the new, uh, director, and I guess she does have extensive experience, from what I understand, in, uh, the Colorado Department of Transportation and working, I think, at the federal level, so.
How do you spell your last name?
Ali W.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's all that I have.
Greg? Um, I, uh, made you aware that rural legislative day is coming up, January twenty-third to twenty-fifth, if you would like to attend, or you'd like to reserve rooms as soon as possible.
I'm in. I'm in.
It's in Denver.
And they may not have it from what I gather, today at the Capitol, I like to think they had in the past, and.
Greg, I'd like to go, too.
Okay.
In the west, it is a good thing.
They were talking about having downtown somewhere, or somewhere else this year, something like that. I think Terrence is gonna have, find all that information out, of course.
I just know.
Greg just forwarded it.
And then, uh, I, as I reported to you before, I'm on the TSJC Presidential Selection Committee, and we're going to be starting interviews on the seventh of the, so it sounds like it's gonna be a couple of fairly intense days. I think we're interviewing ten people.
Oh. Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Counselor?
Mayor, council members, I don't have anything to report on, I just wanna say that I'm working on the ethics code. I'm sorry, by the end of December, that was overly optimistic, I'll get you a draft as soon as I can. And, and I'll try to, what day is the work session next week? Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, was it Monday or Tuesday?
Monday.
Tuesday is, uh, the only.
What's going on Monday?
Monday?
Monday, the chairs, the boards and chairs are meeting here at five, what time is the council meeting?
Five.
Maybe I'll try to get you.
What's the subject of the work session? Hmm, what's the subject of the work session?
Um, part of it is a proposed good moral character forum, inside of that is going to be on the.
Can I make a? Most of it is economic development.
Okay.
We can't combine that with the eighth? The meeting on the eighth?
No, there's not a meeting on the eighth.
Meeting on the eighth.
Right, we don't have.
That's the. Oh, that's the training, I'm sorry, okay, I thought it was a special one, okay.
Unless people, unless you wanna move it later in the week?
I don't know how to be at two places.
Well, you're gonna figure it out. What we doing here?
Honestly, I'd rather do it later in the week, it's a lot of meetings in the rural, even this one, you can come to and like, it's a lot.
Why don't you take a look at it, Greg, and see if you can come up with an alternative date, I know Tuesday, of course, is out for me, 'cause I'll be in Denver.
Okay. Well, it isn't, yeah, um, I think it's a discussion that you have to have, um, I think you all talk about economic development, but I'm not sure everybody is on the same plate as to what economic development is of one thing or another, and so it's good to have a standard approach.
Okay, maybe Wednesday or Thursdays.
I can't do it on, on standard, with a meeting that night, unfortunately.
I think we ran through all of these at the last meeting, and Monday was the only one that worked out.
We have a conflict now with the boards and commissions, so. Is there, is it easier to resolve that, instead of calling fifteen people, by making it Thursday?
Well, I think if you're going to move it, it's probably gotta be two weeks.
Could we just do it in a different room in the building, like we've done before, when this room is occupied by others?
Tom is saying audio, he needs audio.
The board and commission? How many people show for the board and commissions?
It's all the, um, it was the, all the chairs, so it's just a meeting of ten people, we can easily meet another room.
Can you meet downstairs?
It's just if you're discussing economic development, I don't know how to resolve my conflicts, I'll figure that out.
We can just move it a couple of weeks, if you want.
Sounds like that.
That might be better.
That might be best. Do that, okay.
I'll have a draft of the code to you by that works. That's all I have. Certainly, move on. Uh, today when I was at the roundtable meeting, I was introduced to a gentleman who's sitting out in the audience tonight, and his name is Mr. Cordoba, and he was presently from Peyton, Colorado.
All around, yes, sir.
And, uh, we had a little chat, and, uh, what a very nice man and lady that I had talked to, the, uh, they like Trinidad, they love coming here, and I believe he told me that the, he owns some property up in the Engleville area, where my relations kinda came from also, and, uh, it was just a nice chat, Mr. Cordoba, and, and, you know, if you get a little chance, maybe you could introduce yourself to the city manager and the city attorney and our, and our staff, and we're just happy to have you here and welcome you to the city of Trinidad. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. I'm Jay Cordoba, I'm south in Colorado, been here about a year, my wife, Jan. And, uh, we're just studying up on finding out what you guys are doing governing the city of Trinidad, and catching up with our politics, and we didn't realize was involved to make this a good city. And, uh, we enjoy your meeting, and we plan to continue on it, and study enough on it.
Okay, item eleven, executive session for a conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four B. Legal advice regarding the executive session, motion to go ahead and do the executive session, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote, please.
Bonato?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Goodall?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mateh?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, we'll just stay here, and there's not going to be any, no, anything afterwards, so.